Well, I think we can get started. Russell usually times in not too long after six. This is a new public hearing, correct, Ken?
That's correct. It's a newly advertised public hearing with the revised HRE district.
I don't have the announcement in front of me, so would you do the honors?
Hey, Mike, is Sonia still there?
No, she just left.
Can you get her back? She has the announcement.
She's out the door and gone.
Let me just look and see if I find it somewhere.
George, I have a copy of the agenda, if that's what you're looking for.
No, I was just looking for the advertisement, but
Sorry.
Thank you. No, I based on technical difficulties, I would ask for a motion to waive the reading of the meeting notice.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. opposed? Very good. And maintain the formalities and ask for a motion to open the public meeting.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? state your name when you make your motion.
Muntzen made the motion.
And I think Mike seconded.
I seconded.
Very well. I think we could start off with a presentation from let's see, I didn't see who is here to represent the applicant or the sponsor of this, other than just to update us on the changes that were made in the proposed.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Tocchio here for the proponent of the article. What we did from the last time that we had seen you folks is that the board had a discussion on December 28th concerning the article and whether it could with changes be something that would be acceptable to the board for a recommendation. We listened in and the subjects that were discussed were twofold. One, Mr. King talked about just concerns about the residential component is small. Small as it is, there are limitations, but he brought up that there really wasn't a tie to the phasing in that the board would want some greater control over the residential phasing piece so that there wasn't the risk to the town that somebody could come into qualifying piece of land, just do the residential piece and, you know, therefore not necessarily follow up with additional phases. The second piece that was mentioned was, and this came up with since the first meeting, was that the size overall of the proposed overlay district went well north of Glen Charlie up to the Plymouth line. And some of the concern worthy incongruity with a lot of the smaller lots up in that area, just kind of the residential neighborhoods and a question as to now what's the likelihood that this is going to be expanded up into that area? What we did based on those comments is we came in, we took a real hard look at the zone. And what we did was we effectively proposed to reduce it to sixteen and a half percent of its original size. So we looked at the absolute kind of the focused land between Glen Charlie Road on the north and then Route 25 on the south. And what we did was we restricted it to that area. And you folks have both a large scale and zoom in scale map of the area that we're talking about. And it's bound most predominantly, I believe, by one of the neighborhoods up to the northeast corner. And we can go through on a parcel by parcel basis. We were hoping to have that this evening. It's not yet completed. We wanted to make sure that we submitted it to Mr. Buckland in good shape, but that's basically being undertaken now. With respect to the controls, if you look at, I've got a January 14th letter which was submitted to the board through Mr. Buckland. If you take a look at section in there, that's basically, excuse me, one second. Phase developments is section seven. And if you go through and you pull that section, what we've done is we've added additional language saying that special project, special permit could be approved for development in one or more phases. And then we added, "The planning board shall have the authority to approve in its sole discretion phase construction of the residential components of a project independent of the phase construction of the non-residential components of the same project and may impose limitations upon the issuance of building permits for residential uses related to a rate of development based on an approved project development timeline." So what we did was we added to the board's discretion that was originally proposed to address Mr. King's concern that the board would obviously as part of the entire rollout of all of this, understand what's proposed and then have this enhanced discretion to go through and look at the phasing and just what the rollout is for various components of a development. So those are the two pieces that we did put together. I don't know if it's appropriate if the host, if you folks wanted the host to put up the new zoning map or if everybody has seen that, but it's basically the wedge of land that goes between Route 25 up to, and it's bounded on the north by Glen Charlie Road. And with that, that's, that's, those are our responsive comments from the board's comments on the 20th of December. And I can answer any questions that you folks may have.
Ken, do you have a, are you able to put up a shaded or colorized version of the map or?
If you can pull that up.
And I'm sorry, with the snow and all that, I'm not in my office, so I don't have, I don't have the ability to pull things up and post them.
What snow?
Yeah, I know, whatever it is. You folks getting this slushy rain, too?
Yeah, all rain.
Yeah.
So while Ken's doing that, this is Richard Jeff. I had a discussion with you to understand a little bit better on actual, on how much actual housing could go into this area. And it's my understanding that this is a little, this is a little under 300 acres. This article calls for no more than 10% of that land to be used, which brings it down to 30 acres and the underlying R130 zoning still does apply, which is three acre zoning, which brings it down to 10, 10 units. Now granted, they can be, per this article, multifamily, three to four families. So do I understand this correctly? I want to make sure I said that right.
Yeah, actually, that's, that's a better job than I can kind of explain the numbers. The other thing is that it's basically up to 10% as well. So if you look at that, that's what it is, is it's expressed in two limitations. And that's, that's something that was intended to give the board discretion to mix something in. And I stated this before. The residential mixed use component, this isn't, this isn't a group that wants to necessarily do that. But what's happened is we've learned that as we go through, we learned this with the Mass Works grant applications, that there is, there are funding and grant advantages to having some residential mixed component, particularly in conjunction with like a transportation situation. And in this instance, the 7-Eleven Dunkin' Donut is, that's the terminus of two of the Gatra lines. And then the Gatra bus line goes down Glen Charlie and it goes right past the property. So it basically traverses the northern edge of this entire, you know, zoning overlay. So the thinking is that as we go forward and we look for additional grants, funding, things of that nature, that we're able to tick off job creation, permanent jobs, and then also to have some mixed use component. So we learned that with the Mass Works grant. And if we're going to be looking at different transportation type situations, for example, for the, you know, the large 300 acre parcel, this will all be, you know, really helpful to all the transportation authorities, particularly those with, with funds available.
I, I bring that up because it was an eye opener for me to when I realized how little actual residential housing would be allowed. And I compared to the Littleton Drive project, where I think there's 11 buildings over 40 acres, Ken, is that correct?
16 acres at Littleton.
Yeah, four, four, I'm sorry, thank you. I think that's an 11 buildings over 16 acres and this is, I think it's actually nine buildings over almost 300. So from a residential perspective, the density is minutia.
Yeah. And again, it's up to that, you know, it's
Right.
That's the, that's the advantage of the master plan. You get to see everything at once that's laid out. You get to understand the interplay of the different, you know, the different uses and the board gets to look at the big picture when they go through. So that's, that's worked out well. You know, it's, it's a large, it's a large, you know, large land area. But it's, you know, that's, that's actually an advantage because it allows us to hit different benchmarks, open space, et cetera. So with having enough land available, you know, it actually lays out really well for, you know, various, various types of uses and then mixes. And those were the, those were the pieces that we were asked to, well, we weren't asked, but, you know, we took it upon ourselves to be responsive to the comments. We wanted to make sure that, you know, as we heard it, we, we were thinking, okay, we can, we can easily respond to that. So that was the, you know, that was our goal of putting this together for you folks. And other than that, I'd just say there were a couple of tweaks here and there. And then we provided you folks with a red line version if you had any more questions about that. And yeah, please, any other questions? I just, I, you know, it's a, it's a lot of pages. But, you know, I can certainly answer any further questions. Otherwise, it retains exactly the same position as, you know, it has been since it was changed a while ago, but it's, it's a consistent version.
Were you able to find the map, Ken?
No, I wasn't.
I have it. You want me to share it?
Would you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it showing?
Yes.
Now, is that what's shaded? Is that 300 acres or is your property?
The property that I generally describe as three, what you're looking at there, I believe, is 963 acres. It's dominated considerably, you know, some of the, some of the conservation land to the east is there and we decided to put that in. Basically, the Plymouth Town Line establishes the easterly boundary. And that's something that we spoke to Mr. Buckland about, you know, just do you, do you include it? Do you end it, you know, artificially before that? And we made the decision that it was best to allow it to go to the east of the Plymouth line. And you can see that. And then what we do is we basically have Glen Charlie Road as that kind of northerly and westerly boundary. And then, you know, you can see some of the neighborhoods to the north that are all excluded. And again, that's not about 963 acres. I think George asked that question. It's about 16.5% of what we had originally because it continued on the north side of Glen Charlie and it went all the way up to the northern boundary, which was the Plymouth line in that area. So some of the comments that came back, you know, we listened to, we took a look at, you know, what's there for the existing residential uses, very densely populated, very small lots, a lot of different issues. And it made sense for us to, you know, just not have to necessarily bite anything off up there. But then again, on the other side, it's large enough that it would allow for qualifying properties that all would, you know, basically be very close to or budding Route 25 to be available for these types of enhanced uses, which we believe in the, you know, this is residential underlying zone that being tucked up close to Route 25, that, you know, we can make more productive use of this land for these mixed purposes and that, you know, obviously from a revenue generation standpoint, that this would be to the long-term advantage of the town.
Now, this entire area received protection for wellhead protection purposes. And I noticed in your proposal, there's a lot of reference to nitrogen. I see, and maybe it's not the right place, but I don't see how things like packing lot runoff, roof runoff and that sort of thing is addressing groundwater discharge. And you do mention in this proposal that wastewater plants are approved. And in the regulation, they're not. It seems like a contradiction if you want to use the land, but I wondered if you had any thoughts or plans on how that would be addressed?
Yes. So what we did was we spent a lot of time in some of the earlier discussions having to do with, you know, the standards that we've got on, and it's basically 9B is, is where it's, where it's addressed. So what we did was since the first hearing in through the second, we had comments concerning what's out there for, you know, we've got a zone two there. We also have the Buttermilk Bay Overlay District as well, both which have a component of groundwater protection that are special permits which go through the Board of Appeals. So the questions were the, you know, the comments were that we should be in a position to basically put together language that there be no adverse nitrogen impact to the surrounding groundwater and surface water resources. And then what we did was we went through and we've basically adopted that language. And then we also had a situation where the Board of Appeals shall provide its recommendations to the planning board relating to the applicant showing that there will be no adverse nitrogen impact to the surrounding groundwater and surface water resources. So what we did was we wound up opening up an additional channel to those existing groundwater production provisions and put that together, put that into this at 9B. We also noticed that, and I think this is something that we discussed, but, you know, we didn't put it into our draft, but there was suggestion that there'd be downstream wells put in that would be, you know, basically to the south of the properties, otherwise to the north of both Route 25 and then also where the drinking water supply is located. And they would be downstream monitoring wells and that those would be in place both during construction and then also permanently for the life of the project. And there's been a comment which was submitted to me and if we didn't say, yes, that's a good idea, then it's something that we expected, we do expect would be something that would be installed to ensure, I mean, that's basically the, you know, the line that would be out there that we'd be using both from construction monitoring, you know, long-term monitoring. And there was a suggestion at, I want to say, excuse me, one second, four, which is an administrative procedure. And then I believe it was C, excuse me, B32, C32. And then there's, there was a request that study shall include methods of protecting groundwater supply during construction and shall include at a minimum observation well suitably placed for determining current groundwater quality and for periodic testing for the life of the project. So that language, whether you have it or whether it's something we can provide to you folks, that's something that, that we expect would be a good solution for these questions. And additionally, that in conjunction with what we talked about earlier, which was that 9B, you know, criteria for review, again, no adverse nitrogen impact to the surrounding groundwater, surface water resources. We understand that's a concern. We also understand that that's, you know, that's an absolute responsibility. Something that's going to have to be upheld and we've, I mean, we've got some mounting analysis done, et cetera. We've got some advanced information on that already. And we expect that all the requirements for the filing are, you know, something that, you know, we'd certainly be able to put together for you folks. And we've got a pretty good understanding of what's there already for the groundwater characteristics.
Well, the monitoring wells are not a preventative, but they are a adistic for people to have to
Yeah, absolutely. And I would expect if this had, you know, if this had a package treatment plant, you know, something that DEP would be reviewing that, you know, this, this obviously would be fully, you know, fully vetted, the science, all of the, all of the engineering, the design would be, you know, what would be appropriate. Obviously, everyone will have the information of what's there for the groundwater conditions, depth, proximity to the wells, all the soil substrate, et cetera. And that would be all part of the approval process. You know, currently, currently the DEP has got a 10-part per million for the nitrogen. You know, our experience with plants like this is that they would be more enhanced. And again, they're designed to fit all of the modeling for, for the site. So that's what we would expect. And then of course, having all of the downstream wells is, you know, that's just, that's doing it right. And that's giving you peace of mind that we know what's happening.
So let me, let me jump in here. I want to make sure I understand. So the proposal or the response that you're saying is, is that you're willing to include in this article the provisions for monitoring wells during construction and monitoring wells for the life of the project with periodic testing during the life of the project? What, I think that's great, but I also ask, I have to ask this question. Is that something that we make mandatory for any project that goes into this, into this area? Or is that something that we say is at the discretion of town government when they do the special permit process to make that determination? I can, in my mind, I'm worried about people coming forward with projects that, that the monitoring wells for the life of the project aren't really applicable or, or the right thing to do and could be very, very cost prohibitive for smaller scale projects that, that don't present a groundwater hazard. And my point to this is that it needs to be done on a case by case basis. And that's what this permitting process is for. I'd hate to put in this as a hard requirement for anything that's, any project is done in this zone. Or is that, maybe I'm wrong, but that's what comes to my mind. And I'd love to hear what the other board members think about that. Or Mr. Tocchio, what do you think?
Yeah, if, if you'd like me to speak first, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a great question. I know. I mean, I know for a fact that that's something that, you know, 300, you know, 260 to 300 acres, that's a situation where, you know, I, we know that that's going to be something that happens, but the land that we have is so big that, you know, the economics, you know, is, that's, that's just a price of admission. I will note that we've got, you know, minimum lot sizes. So I don't know how many smaller users are going to be out there, but that's, that is something certainly that you folks could make at your discretion. It wouldn't necessarily be applicable to us because, you know, we would cross that threshold. But it's all a question of, you know, how, how much you feel that there would be an impact to, to the wells. So it doesn't matter if it's, if it's me, it doesn't matter if it's something small. Your bottom line, you know, don't cross the line. Line in the sand is protection of the wells. So that's, that's got to be up to, to you folks.
Well, it, it also offers you some protection in that you have a before and after sample that you wouldn't be blamed for
Yep.
wrongdoings in the past, you know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And what they also do is they put upstream wells in. And in this, you know, this is a very active, it's a very active area. And by the time, by the time we're filing, we're going to have a very, a very good idea of what's happening here. I don't know yet, but it could conceivably be a situation where we've got some properties to the north because of the groundwater direction that could be coming down to the south onto this property. We know that this area's got, you know, several failed, you know, septic systems, et cetera, et cetera. So that's something we all have to keep our eye on. That's one of the reasons that we were working with your sewer board to see if we could get that Mass Works grant to get the, to get that dry line put under Glen Charlie Road because that's going to be a situation whether, whether this applicant comes or not. You know, whether it's all of you folks, whether it's your kids, your grandkids, the town's going to have to deal with that at some point. Because you folks are going to run into problems with DEP just overall on a sewer discharge issue. So the more that we can get things done now and understand it, the better. So when we have comments about the wells, it's a bigger picture. This is a piece of the picture that we can, we can figure it out. We can figure out what's there. We can, we can bring in, you know, whatever design, we need to understand this piece. And then to the extent that we can bring in any other infrastructure that can fix that, you know, that's, that's going to be a step in the, in the direction for this corner of town. Not to mention, if I may, just the revenues, because I know in, you know, in talking to Mr. Campania that, you know, just from a, you know, from a budgeting standpoint, you folks have a lot of, you know, aged infrastructure in town. And you're in a situation, you know, you're at a position where it's difficult to get the funding to, you know, keep up with, you know, parts that are failing, never mind adding additional pieces. So as we go forward, get away from COVID, you know, start to get into a position where the economy is starting to come back. There's going to be a question with regard to, you know, revenue sources, things There's going to be a question with regard to, you know, revenue sources, things of that nature. And this all, you know, this is all going to play into the, the longer term, you know, view of finances for the town. The financial pinch is hitting now, it's going to hit next year. Will we be in a position to be generating revenues within that time period? Nope, absolutely not. But, you know, the, the plan is, is that if we can get this in the, in the permitting pipeline, be in a position to prosecute this sometime later in 2021, that, you know, perhaps this can, this can actually be coming online, hit with the jobs, et cetera. Right now, estimates that are out there with Commonwealth Massachusetts were 1,000 construction jobs and it's an estimate of 1,000 permanent jobs. Also, there've been discussions about, you know, collaborating with, you know, the technical schools, community colleges, et cetera, with respect to job training, things of that nature. So it's just quite a bit potentially on the horizon out there. And then, you know, that's, that's hopefully what, what this initiative is going to be able to unlock for, for Wareham.
Now, now you said it's going to unlock a lot of, a lot of benefits for Wareham. The last overlay district was supposed to do that in that field. So why are you going to be any different?
Oh, you know, I don't know a lot about the last overlay district. I, I hear, I hear that it's taken a long time to hit. And I, what I was told was it was starting to have some benefits before the COVID hit. Why is this different? I think it's going to be different because you've got a developer that's out there that instead of a lot of small properties, you've got one developer that's out there that has a track record of doing good projects. It's been received very well in other municipalities and that can point to like jobs, tax dollars, et cetera. You know, my folks did all of the Quarry Hills, the Granite Links Golf Course, which is up in Quincy. And, you know, the, the mayor of Quincy was, was the person who, you know, just kind of, he's spoken to this in how, you know, how great a partner my clients are. So they've got the track record. I can envision a situation, there are other towns that on their own go out and try to put zoning in place. They put the zoning in place and then they spend money with PR firms and all that trying to attract, you know, the kind of the big developer that's got the resources, has the investment, has the, the ability to do all the transportation planning, do all the land planning. And, and it might take them five years searching for that one developer who can take down 300 acres. You folks are in the opposite position. You've actually got someone out there with a track record who can point to things and he's saying, I want to come to Wareham. I can make this happen. I like the area. I like the site. And I'm ready to go. So I, I think, I think that's a pretty unique situation and it's an excellent question. I, I think I would have very, very, very high confidence that this is, this is something that could happen. You folks have been seeing me now for several months. You know, I'm, I'm not going away. My, my instructions are we need to, we need to get this to a position that we can, you know, start to, you know, start to feel that we can be going into, into the town. So the word that I get is all positive, investments lining up. And I just hope that, that, that you folks are all, you know, on board and can, you know, can see this happening in your town. The jobs, I mean, those numbers are significant. And I already, you know, talked about, for example, that the 2 million that we're trying to capture for that dry pipe under Glen Charlie, that's, you know, that's the tip of the iceberg. We assisted Mr. Buckland in putting that together. We've got the engineering, we've got the applications, we've got everything there. We don't even have anything beyond a purchase and sale agreement on a piece of land. So I think, I think that in and of itself, you know, that's a lot. That speaks volumes, that, that costs a lot of money to put together. And, you know, whether it goes through or not, town of Wareham, it specifically can help you folks to achieve goals that you've stated independent of us. It goes back, you know, it goes back decades on the studies of the Agawam River, all of the, you know, the problems with the septic systems. This is something that shows you the advantages of having a private party with the resources to be able to, to jump in and then also the interest in the public. We've seen this exactly in Quincy, just with the investment that happened. That's one of Quincy's, you know, prided, you know, assets. And that was something that was blighted. And now it's, you know, now it's in magazines. Now it's on, you know, with Bill Costas Dining, you know, when he has a television show, et cetera. These are the types of assets.
The Quincy project was, was a dump for all the waste from the big dig. It was just an advantage that they had all the stuff to put the infrastructure in.
Yeah, Quincy was actually, Quincy was actually the landfill for the town. But what happened was it all needed to be capped up to environmental standards. So what happened was they got a situation where they were able to get the clay and then cap all of that. So they solve all those problems for the big dig. They solved the problems for the city of Quincy. But then they go the next step. They turn it into a 27-hole golf course with a, you know, beautiful clubhouse and, you know, all the amenities that are up there. These, these, this is the type of thinking, this is, this is who you've got here. They have identified the land and the question was excellent. Like, how do we know this is, you know, going to benefit? How do we know it's going to happen? I can only point to something which is just an absolute tremendous success. Similar, similar vision here for Wareham. And, you know, I just, it's, you know, I, I just hope, I hope you folks can, can see not only the implications here, but the other implications as well. We've got, you know, support from different restaurant groups because the bottom line is people stopping in Wareham is going to be really big for the town. Being able to cross promote different amenities is going to be huge. People who get on here, think about folks who don't know where onset is, don't know any of the history, don't know anything about it. What they do is they come into a place and there's the benefit to be able to say to folks, come here, visit this restaurant, go to this partner, et cetera. That's, that's how, that's how these properties operate. So you've got just the area off of Route 25. And then you can start to, you know, go beyond that and just see Wareham becomes, you know, a destination instead of a, you know, something that people, you know, used to stop, now 25. I mean, it's, it's an interesting interchange. It's got interesting exits, but it doesn't advantage your town. This is an opportunity to, to do something, you know, really, you know, generationally important for you folks. I just, I just hope, I just hope it's something that, that the town can, can embrace because it's going to have big advantages for the town. Just, you know, revenue, I can show you, you know, just what potential numbers can be eventually, just on tax revenues alone. Right now you're looking at a gravel pit, not a lot of revenues. You start to put something in there that can generate revenues now, whether it's police, fire, teachers, DPW, EMT, it's just, you know, really, it's been a good, good investment for Quincy. And I think, you know, I think you, you folks would see the same. We've got some economic general studies that are put together so far. They're all looking at what we know and things that we know involve, you know, potential projections based on what COVID is going to do to the town. And, you know, they don't look good. They don't look good in any cities and towns. And then we're hoping if we can get to a point where this is an allowed use that you folks will consider. Again, the other piece of the equation is just passing this doesn't allow anything to happen. We still have to design something, propose something, give you all the studies, have you approve it. So what we're asking for is just the opportunity to be in a position to do that. And then, you know, you folks can take it from there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Uh, who's speaking?
Uh, this is Mike King. I had to, I had to ditch my laptop. It was giving me trouble. So I'm on my phone.
So, sorry, Mike. I didn't recognize your voice. Yeah.
Excuse me, Michael. Richard, could you put down, do you have the ability to put the, the thing, the map down? I just, I can't see faces. It's just easier for me to understand who's speaking to. Thanks, Mike. I'm sorry.
Well, you, you, you're not going to get to see my handsome face, unfortunately. It's just going to be my voice. But speaking to, more so to Mike Baptiste,
Yep.
I'm, I'm every bit as protective about the town as Mike is. I'm not a lifer, but you know, I, I do care a lot about what happens. But I, I will say this, Mike, if you've ever been to the two projects that the company that this gentleman's representing, Jan and I actually go to Granite Links or used to before COVID quite often to, to enjoy the, the restaurant, the clubhouse there. First class all the way. I, I'm not, I'm not really one to hop on someone's bandwagon and give them accolades before they put a shovel in the ground. But both of these projects that they've done in Quincy are amazing, to say the least. So I, I'm not so much concerned as to what they would put in there and the level of quality. I think the only thing for me, which you guys have already touched on, is just protecting the groundwater. I think, I think that's really my, my personally, that's really my only concern. As far as what they would do with the property, the benefit of the town, that part of it, I, I really don't have any concern over.
And I'll, I'll follow up to that. And thank you. I just, I'm, you know, that, the, the assets that they have, I mean, we've represented them for decades now. And, you know, it's, it's, it's good, I mean, I get excited because it, it's a project that was just done so well. And it just keeps coming back as being successful. I will say on the groundwater, what we have talked about this evening exceeds what you have just on the underlying, you know, the zone two, which is the groundwater protection and then also the Buttermilk Bay. You will be in a position, you don't, you know, tonight is not about saying something's approved. Tonight is hopefully about approving language that then allows us to come in. And we'll have our studies and, you know, we'll have our, whatever we have for the, you know, technology requirements, we'll have the wells. And then we have to go through and we have to show you folks, you know, what we're doing, et cetera. We've got to go through the process. We also have to go through the Board of Appeals. And then that's your chance. If, if we're not there, then, you know, that's your chance to, you know, for folks to say, this doesn't go far enough, where it doesn't do the job. So what I respectfully request is if we can get through tonight, a lot of the concerns that we're talking about come down to looking at the master plan, looking at all the science. And then you folks, you know, not, not to be flip, but you'll have at it. You'll, you know, you'll have the hearings, you'll have all the input from the neighbors, you'll have peer review. And, you know, we'll go through and we'll do what we do, you know, week after week on other projects in other towns. But if, if we don't get the opportunity to even propose anything, you know, that's, that's, that's kind of the hump that we have to get over right now. So hopefully this is something that you folks can recommend it. We would still have to go to town meeting, of course. And if Wareham looks at this, at that point, we'll have submitted more information about financials, et cetera. And if, if you folks look at this and say, granting this bylaw gives us the opportunity to, to receive these potential jobs benefits, revenue benefits, service benefits. That's, that's all we ask for. At the, at the end of the day, people say, no, you know, we, we like Wareham the way it is. The gravel pit isn't bothering anyone. We're, you know, we're good. So be it. But there are, you know, there are consequences of that decision. And then there are consequences of saying, yeah, let's, let's go to the next step and have them propose something. And I think that the consequences, potential upside are tremendous. And you folks don't give anything away from, you know, protecting, you know, groundwater supply, any of your other protected interests. This bylaw puts everything out there. We went through, we modeled it on other portions, portions of your bylaw. And it's just going to go through and, and this board presumably, if this is something that we can get together, you know, quickly enough, this would be, you know, in effect, the board that would be looking at. You know, that would be your job. And I think it would be the time for you to go through and, and we're certainly going to know what you're going to want.
Any other board members have a comment?
Thank you.
One thing you touched upon, the existing overlay district. One of the problems we had with that is when it goes to pre-existing, like on your map, you've got a lot of small lots along Glen Charlie Road.
Yep.
I don't know what the status of those, whether they're developed or not. But in a similar circumstance, that was always considered to be residential and it turned out a few years later that that didn't happen. And you have residential areas with industrial buildings across the street. So I think some sort of buffer we need to.
So that's, that's a really good question. We early on put in that, you know, uses, uses could remain. In the instance here, and particularly the Glen Charlie, the, excuse me, the lots there are extremely deep. And then you've got different resources that are back there. So that it's a situation where you've got all the natural buffer. The other thing that's interesting about that is that there are priority habitats that separate the back of all of those lots over to the west from the property itself that we're talking about. And that's why, if you take a look at some of the layouts, our road where we proposed it delineates the the westerly boundary of, you know, kind of the unencumbered upland. So we actually met with folks from DEP Natural Heritage. And that's something that we had on a map. And that was, you know, one of the, one of the initial responses was excellent. So you folks are, you're going to stay away from all of those habitats. You're going to keep everything segregated on one side. And that was something that, you know, was for us, you know, the feedback was excellent planning. And we, you know, we obviously have to go through and do different habitat mitigation, et cetera. But given the size of the land and that we've got the excellent conservation land way over to the east, that was all, you know, certainly achievable. What that does is that puts down huge natural buffer between all of those houses that are all up closer to Glen Charlie Road. And that's, that I think is a, is a different factor from the, that business overlay district. It's just, it's something that, that we looked at and it, it, it basically plays out really well. The other thing is, is that we put in some pretty big setbacks for buildings that was in here. So we've, we've got those which are existing as well, recognizing that it's just, you know, the land that we're talking about is just, it's huge. So it gives us a lot of, a lot of advantages and flexibility there. Uh, excuse me.
That identified anywhere? Do town have a map in their possession?
Yes. So if, I don't know if you have it now, it would be on your GIS. Excuse me one second. I'm just going to look down. I've, I've got, you know, for, it'll, it'll be backwards. I apologize. But, you know, we've got different maps that show resources. So I'm going to try to look at it in the reflection. So it's backwards. But you've got Glen Charlie Road down, down in this area. And then you can see this hard yellow line. That hard yellow line shows where the, where all of the, the habitat is. So everything going from that yellow line west to Glen Charlie winds up being habitat. And then DEP Natural Heritage omitted all of the house lots. but what it does is it establishes a corridor of, um, of protected land that, um, that winds up being, um, being an excellent natural buffer on that west side.
So they're not going to transport the turtles to someplace else then, right? Like they did in the mall?
No, it's, um, what it is, is it's, um, it's a moth, and then what happens is the moths, um, their, their habitat of the oak, so all those low pin oaks, et cetera. So what happens is, that doesn't get touched, um, a couple of little trims just to straighten out roads, but what happens is, um, a bunch of oak were taken down as part of the gravelling operations, and you can see where, where some of the, the gravelling stopped, all of the oak is coming back in. So what, what the comment was, was, you know, you've got a situation where you can put in all, you know, new oak all in this area, and, you know, the laugh was, it's all coming in on its own anyways, can you imagine how good it will be if you folks actually go in and start to plant the areas as part of, um, as part of the mitigation? So that wound up being a good story, and that's, that's also a little bit of a, that's, we've done a lot of work on this land, so, so when I, I tell George that we've got, you know, different mounding studies started, et cetera, we did a lot of work on this because it's, it's, you know, it's a big piece of land and it's expensive. We've already got all, um, wildlife studies, we have got, um, you know, different, uh, conservation-related work that we've done already because we have to know that we can satisfy what the requirements are going to be. And one of the big ones was this, um, you know, the species, because we had to make sure that we understood it, because if we, if, if we close on this and we start going forward, and then we find out we have moths and we can't deal with it, that's a problem. So this, this client does enough of things like this to actually have all the experts go out and make sure that we understand it, and make sure that, you know, it's all achievable. So we've done that level of homework. So if you, you know, if you're asking, you know, how ready is this, this client, how well-funded are they? You know, that, that should, that should, um, that should give you a, a good idea of how much they have invested here. And this goes through, if it goes through, um, you know, gives you an idea that, you know, they'd be, they'd be prepared to kind of quickly, um, you know, start getting the designing going and, and, and getting things ready for you folks. And I'm sorry, I, I can, um, I can get this to, um, to Mr. Buckland during the, uh, during the week. Um, I just, I don't have the ability to get it there, but I can, I can get that to him so you can see that.
Anna.
It's good.
He, um... Uh, let's see, the... Any other questions from the board or comments?
I have one more, uh, one more question. I'd like to understand a little bit about information requirements. This is in Section 4C. Um, you talk about the, in, uh, in item I, or it's the E, the, the environmental notification form?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Um, I, I hadn't heard of that before, I went and looked one up, and I wanted to share with the board, um, that people that don't know what it is, what it is, is a, a form that's required by the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs in Massachusetts. Um, it's a 22-page template that, that gets, that, uh, gets information about almost every environmental factor that you can think of, just going to read you a couple of them. Um, talks to, just starting out with a project description, talks about areas of critical environmental concern, any rare species, historical or archaeological resources, water resources, stormwater management, and I'm on page four so far. And, um, it goes on and on, and, and Mr. Tashio, the only comment I would make to you about this, I think this is great, and it gives us a, a basis to work from. However, the wording is a little soft in terms of, um, if there isn't one required by state law that, um, that will, will only be used, uh, conforming to the format of, if you, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I, I do. So what, what happens in this instance is it's, it's just super comprehensive, and if it, it either is going to qualify for, um, a MEPA review on the Mass Environmental Policy Act, um, or it's not. Um, and so, you know, if it does, and this certainly would, you wind up tipping into, um, the category of, uh, you know, you tip into the category of actually having it reviewed. Um, it results in a Section 61 finding, which is issued by the Secretary of Environmental Affairs for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Um, that's, that's a, an amazingly significant level of review. Um, you know, we've, I've seen Amazon last mile, um, proposals that have tried to avoid that level of review because it's, it's so, it's so intense. Um, in this instance, you know, we, we hit several triggers, we know that. That's the other reason that, um, that we actually, uh, you know, did all of the work, uh, ahead of time. Usually you don't see that in a bylaw, this is the first time I've ever seen that in a bylaw, but, um, based on, you know, some of the, the concerns, comments, uh, we decided to, to put it in to give you folks, um, you know, the peace of mind, and that's a combination of, you know, species, groundwater, et cetera, it's, um, we're there, you know, we're going to have to embrace it, so, so we thought that we'd put it in. We can't lock other projects into having to go through the MEPA process because they either qualify or they don't. So we felt that this was the best way to give you folks maximum protection and be consistent with, um, you know, with the, the mass general laws.
Can you give me, uh, and the rest of, uh, the board, a little, uh, an indication of what are the type of triggers that, that cause for this?
Yep.
This, uh, MEPA review?
Yep, so it can be, um, anything from new, um, new parking, uh, number of parking, uh, on the site, um, can be a combination of parking, um, new traffic. So right now, um, right now, probably 10 vehicle trips go to that 300 acres a day. Um, so there'll be just triggers based on those. Um, also, there are other review levels that have to do with, um, just like energy code, greenhouse gas emission review. Um, it's, it's really, um, really scientific, um, things, you know, low E glass, you know, you know, architectural, um, you know, manners with respect to insulating buildings. Um, so people always point to the stretch code as being something big. If you go into MEPA, you are, you know, you're going to another level. So that, that gives you an idea of the hierarchy of review that this will go through. If, if you folks, if you folks approve this and Wareham approves it, the level of review and, you know, just the, the resulting investment is all, it's all going to be it's very, very high level, likely, um, likely nothing you folks have really seen. Um, MEPA review would be required for, for example, the new bridges over the Kidcot Canal. It gives you an idea of, um, you know, just the, the magnitude of, of what the review would encompass.
All right, um, I do, I like very much the idea that any and all projects per this article would use the, uh, ENF form as a basis, regardless of whether it's needed or not.
Yeah.
So I, I appreciate that, and I encourage, I will share this with the other board members. I found this, uh, and I was, I was act, I was quite shocked at the, the level of depth it goes, so I will share it with my fellow board members, I found it today. Um, if anybody, uh, in the audience wants to know or a copy of it, let me know, and I'll be happy to share with you as well. I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swenson.
Um, if the board has no further comments at this time, I will open it up to the public. I would like to, uh, keep this fairly brief and try not to get repetitive. We've, uh, I know there's been a lot of input the last time we met.
Okay, I've got a question.
Uh, sure.
Before we begin, George, uh, may I just make a comment? Um, our, our last two public hearings that we have done, we tried to keep them casual and interactive, and they really haven't worked out that well, and I would, uh, encourage you, Mr. Chairman, um, to, uh, to pick, uh, to, to call on our, our citizens who want to talk and give them, um, uh, three to five minutes to make their case. Um, I think that, um, once they've done that, they've used their allotted time unless there's extenuating circumstances, but we got into an awful lot of repeat, and an awful lot of just back and forth dialogue in our last two hearings, and I think that's something we need to avoid. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's appreciated, but I, uh, I'm just going to have to go by the seat of my pants rather than be monitoring a time clock.
Well, I, I understand, but I, I think you understand our point.
Yeah, I do, and as I say, if it gets repetitive, or the same voices over and over, we'll, uh, we'll cut things short. Um, person that identified themselves briefly there, or would you identify yourself?
Hi, yes, I would. I'm Holly Heratunian, and I have three very short questions that can easily be answered in under three minutes.
Very good.
The first, I forget which of you gentlemen has the map, if we could put that back up. Uh, my question is, does, uh, does the area for the development that was shaded in, does that touch White Island Pond, and if not, how close does it come? Thank you very much. Um, okay, so we're looking at the yellow shaded area, uh, White Island Pond is, I think you all know where it is. If someone could show me how close the development comes? Or if it touches White Island Pond?
My looking at it says no, it does not touch White Island Pond.
See, my looking at it says it does, and that's why, uh, again, the, the, the dark areas, okay, I'll, I'll have to come in and check it out in person. My second question is...
The pond's unidentified very well, so...
Okay, thank you, I'll come in in person. Um, the second question is, could you point on the map, uh, of those, which of those parcels or combined parcels was the proposal for the Casino Horse Racing Hotel area? I know the, like, and the, and the, they had shown it online, but it was a very concentrated close-up picture. And if you could just, okay, oh, is somebody moving that? So it's that long skinny parcel? Uh, I'm not sure who can answer this, I'm assuming it's, uh, Mr. Tokyo.
I'm not sure, I don't see.
From the arrow to the right, towards the east. Those, those three parcels in there are the ones that are included.
Um, if we started... Oh, go ahead.
Is, is this right, Ken, right here, these three?
And the big one in the middle.
This one.
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I have one last question, and, and this one is for Nodos group, is for so long, you've been telling us not to put, uh, single-family housing here because it would be financially disastrous to the town, and I don't understand now the inclusion of adding housing to the plan. If you could elaborate on that, I, I don't get it.
Sure, so what I'll, what I can answer for that is, if you take a look at, you know, just individual houses, you wind up for residential use, you wind up with net cost to the town. And then what happens is, when you do it with a mixed use, you wind up mixing it with more advantageous uses that would have a significant high net revenue gain. So what happens is, the overall proposal of the mixed use results in an extremely high ret, uh, net revenue gain for the town. So that's, that's how the mixed uses work, and that's why, um, that's why cities and towns are looking to do them. So they wind up being really good, um, really good revenue generators when you look at them, if they're, um, positioned well, and then that's going to be the plan.
I understand that, but we're still then looking at students, ambulances, fire department, and water and sewer. So I would think that most of those basic costs would, to the town, would still be there.
Yeah, no, so what happens is, and we'll come out, once, once there's a proposal, we'll go through, and we'll actually have economic analyses. The numbers, Holly, wind up being significant, abs, absolutely very, very high net positive to the town, and this, this will, this will undoubtedly play along, uh, that track. The other thing is, is that having the mixed uses wind up qualifying for, you know, different levels of advantages coming from, uh, grant programs for infrastructure, things of that nature. So I can't tell you other than, for example, that, um, that water line, uh, the dry pipe that we're looking at, putting in, excuse me, not water, uh, but sewer, dry pipe, uh, that we were looking to install, that's an example of the types of funding that you can seek when you've got qualifying mixed use. So, um, overall pluses, and then what we're going to do is, we're going to ask our, um, economic analytical firm to put that together with more, um, more specifics.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else wish us to comment?
I have a question, this is Richard again, can someone tell me how to stop, how to stop sharing in Zoom? Now, now that I'm sharing my screen.
I cannot.
Have you got a handle?
I think you give the, I think you give the host back to Ken.
On the bottom of your, on the bottom of your screen, Richard, you should have a share screen button.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not popping up, that's how I, that's how I started, and now I want to find the stop share button, and I don't, I'm going to have to, uh, I had to do this last time, I'm going to exit and rejoin.
No, don't, don't do that yet.
Yeah, don't.
Let's see if I can get you out.
If you turn it upside down and shake it, it should go away.
Don't give up so easily. That's something I would do.
Uh-oh, I found it.
All right. Hey, all right.
So, I'm, I'm sorry.
Hello, boomer.
George, I have some questions. Ms. Charlie.
Who's speaking?
Ms. Charlie Rowley.
Oh, hi, Charlie.
Hi. Uh, Mr. Tashio, how many acres was Quincy?
Um, I don't know. Quincy also, uh, included, uh, Port St. Milton as well.
Okay, uh, question for Ken. In the information, uh, where, uh, the Planning Board gathers this information, it says that it's supposed to receive a report from the Board of Appeals as to the satisfaction for nitrogen control. Why is that essential?
I don't know why that's in there.
Well, then I'd recommend it be taken out. The Planning Board is going to be the one that's going to be looking at all of this. It would seem to me that unless there was some unique feature that the Board of Control, Board of Appeals has control over or, or an interest in, that it should be left in the hands of the Planning Board.
And, and I can answer that, Charlie. Um, the land that's generally in this zone is both in the groundwater protection and generally the Buttermilk Bay. So what we are seeking to do is avoid the potentiality of two boards kind of going off and doing their own thing. So what we wanted to do is, we wanted to have a situation where you folks can request all of the, the science, the reports, et cetera, um, but that the Board of Appeals makes the recommendation to you folks with the information. So what we were trying to do is, we were trying to have the boards, um, working concert, uh, with each other because of the, um, you know, the overlapping overlay districts.
Well, that doesn't preclude the Board of doing whatever they want to do, but this is a special, uh, zoning change that you're asking to do over, um, 900 odd acres or so. I don't see why the Board of Appeals necessarily has, um, special, um, oh, what do I want to say, uh, how they can derive the information better than the Planning Board, since the Planning Board's the one to receive it in the first place. But, uh, I'm only going because I don't want to just take a lot of time.
Yeah, I thought that was, we just thought that was a plus for you folks, we, um...
I don't, I don't see it as a plus, basically, because they're not going to be, they're not going to be privy to all of the information and all of the public hearing documents and, and public hearing discussion that would take place with the Planning Board, they're going to be working in a vacuum in this. So unless you've got members of the Board of Appeals sitting there... So unless you've got members of the Board of Appeals sitting there throughout your public hearing process, they're not going to know anything of what's been taking place. This is not disrespectful.
Isn't, isn't the ZBA going to have to grant a permit of some sort against the the water protection overlay?
Fine, let them do it for the water protection overlay, but they shouldn't be the ones to be making recommendations to the planning board that the planning board have to, would have to accept.
I don't think that they have to, I didn't read it, that they had to accept that. That's not the way that we envisioned it. And you folks know the interplay of your boards in other towns where they've got a board that already has jurisdiction. We try to, we try to put it in so that they're both going in the same direction. We would expect, for example, if we do all of this work for you folks, that the same package would be submitted to the zoning board of appeals. There'd be no reason to withhold all of the studies and, you know, the engineering.
They're not going to be holding any public hearing, are they?
I don't know. I don't know.
It's just a permit under the overlay district that the Board of Appeals has to issue, so it'd be a public hearing. Joint public hearings are done in a number of-
It can end up being very counterproductive by leaving it so that you've got two different public hearings. Unless they're coordinated at the same time, so that as you did with the Walmart project, you had the planning board and the ZBA special situation where they met together and they all heard the project at the same time, it's going to be wildly counterproductive because you're not going to get the same information going to both boards at the same time. I think, I think it's, I think it's for the size of these projects. I think it is totally counterproductive to expect that would happen. But I'd like to move on to a couple of other things. I don't know how many of you have actually read through the list of permitted uses. But I have a question as to why it's essential that first of all, any applicant must include some sort of a recreational or indoor or outdoor facility or place of amusement for his project. Why is that essential that everybody that comes through under this bylaw has to have that? Why is that the most important thing? There are other things that could be much more beneficial to the town, but to force that as a requirement? And the second part of it is that they've got to have 100 acres to, go back to one of Richard's initial questions, that it isn't just any mom and pop application that's going to come before you. It's going to be a minimum of 100 acres. And now you're going to have recreational facilities in every one of these 100-acre parcels? Makes no sense to me. Not to say you can't, but to say you must include it. It's like saying you must have a veterinary hospital, or you must have a retail service area, or you must have wastewater treatment facility. Makes no sense. I do have a question, though, about riding stables. I don't see much in the bylaw about how you protect against groundwater deterioration from riding stables. I have a question about dormitories and temporary housing. There's nothing in this bylaw that says what dormitory housing is or what temporary housing is, how long it could be there, whether it sits on stilts, whether it has after foundation, who gives the permit? I don't see why that is a good thing. And one of the last things that I'll say is that allowing outdoor commercial advertising and billboards proximate to Route 25 would be a complete disservice to the town.
Yes.
You're, you're suggesting in the bylaw that's an invitation to quality development. But out on Route 25, you can have billboards and signs advertising Cheap John's Joke Shop. Who wants that? That's junk.
So I can, I can answer some of those, those pieces. What I'd, what I'd recommend, and I could, I could start with, you know, the groundwater protection overlay. It's, you know, it's, it's a zone two, your own, you know, 442.3, you can't store manure outdoors, et cetera. You'd have to go through the whole process. What, what you're doing is respectfully, you're, you're just, you're zoning in on individual pieces and questioning them without, without looking at them under the full proposal for, you know, the entire mixed use proposal. And then what you're doing is you're, you know, the MEEPER alone, Zone 2, DEP alone, before you get into groundwater protection overlay district, before you get into all of the other pieces having to do with protection of the groundwater resources. What happens is you read all of these in a cohesive, comprehensive manner, and that's what provides your restrictions. If I'll talk about, you know, just the use that's out there for the recreation. This is something that in this zone that we talked to Ken early about just having to do with, you know, you've got other areas that have to do with, you know, you can have golf courses, things of that nature, that it's a good use, that it's a use to be appropriate next to Route 25. And it's something that would allow for for the attraction of different folks in a comprehensive way that would be good for the town, would be good for jobs, be good for other types of cross-selling to other parts of the town, whether it's, you know, hospitality, et cetera. And that was the thinking as, as we went through it. I, we didn't see it as something that was handcuffing other users, but we saw it as good planning. We saw it as something that fit well with the area and that was highly likely to attract really good, you know, desirable types of uses. That's, that's what the look was. The dormitories, you ask a billion questions. You'll know the minute that we put together a, you know, a master plan. Oh, that's what it is. Is it on stilts? Let me look at the filing. No, it isn't. What's it going to be used for? I understand. What's it going to look like? Thank you. And you have 100 other questions. But right now, we're just doing a zoning overlay. But all the questions that you're asking are excellent. But I can't even show you. I can answer every single question that you have once the zoning's in place. Billboards, you've got a very negative impression of a billboard, but you haven't seen one proposed. The board may look at something and say, okay, move it back here. Make it half the size. Don't do, you know, X, Y, and Z. Like you said, things that are trashy, et cetera. That's not, that's not what this, what this client does. Currently, their signage consists of a waterfall in the ledge that's, that's in Quincy. The thing costs, you know, tremendous money, but it's all in granite. This is a situation where there'd be an application. And then the board would say, yes, that works. No, it doesn't work. Condition it however they want to condition it. But I trust your board. We're giving the tools here in this code. But I trust the board to go through, look at things, and either prove, reject, condition. But I think it's too early right now to, to jump in and criticize something that we can't even file now.
You're filing, I didn't even know what you're filing. But it doesn't just apply to you.
Correct.
It applies to anybody who might come in under this, under this particular zoning change. So we're not talking just about you or your proposal.
George, excuse me, Charlie. Charlie, I don't want to argue with you. Anyone comes in, it has to be vetted by the planning board.
Yeah, without specific details in there to start with, I can guarantee you that there will be all kinds of things that will be thrown at the board and they will not have the wherewithal to deal with it because it's not written out.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have-
In these kinds of situations. So let's, let's not play games with this.
Charlie, I'm not playing games. This is the permitted uses section that you're talking about. That's all, all right.
Excuse me now, one at a time, let's
Is that, who's, who's talking out of order? I can't tell. Is that going to continue? So Charlie, what I was saying is that anyone would go through the board. If you don't trust the planning board, if you don't trust the planning board, then how can we do anything in this town? How can any zoning bylaw be proposed if the response is from a peer review engineer that the planning board doesn't have the ability to issue or scrutinize a permit or any master planning or anything? I just don't have that negative and pessimistic of view. The work that we do is excellent. The review that we go through in other cities and towns is fantastic. I, I just have not encountered such a negative perception of a planning board, particularly from its peer review engineer. This is, I mean, how do, how do I, how do I, how do I over, how do I overcome this?
Because I don't believe we should be talking about your project. I think we should be talking about the zoning change itself and the merits to the entire town and not just your project.
I agree.
I really don't care what your project is right now.
I agree.
It doesn't matter what your project is. I'm interested in protecting the interests of the town. I've lived there all my life.
I agree.
I don't want to see jeopardized because we allow things to slip through the cracks. I've been at this business, I think, a lot longer than most people around. So I know what I'm talking about. I've seen all kinds of stuff. Mike Baptiste has seen it. George has seen it. So let's not kid ourselves into thinking we should really take a hard look at this and do it the right way. You're going to be living with it a long time.
Charlie, one question. I didn't see where-
To the point where it's usable. If the town wants to go this route, fine. I have no problem with the, the town voting to do this. All I'm saying is, know the impacts. You've reduced the area down to the area east and to the east of Glen Charlie Road. To the extent that you had the zoning before in the entire district, at least you had three streets in town that in a long-term project could have been connected. Right now, with what the zoning is that you've showed on your map, you've got one street in and out. And that's Glen Charlie Road, which is a narrow, winding road. Any other access to that point now has been obliterated by the fact you can't get to Maple Springs Road from there. You can't get to Charge Pond Road from there, which was a part of the zoning district that you had initially proposed. So when, I'm bringing up things that I've seen over time and trying to make sure that everybody looks at it and says, okay, is this the kind of thing you really want to have in town? If so, go ahead and vote it. But I think I have a right and an obligation to point out places where they could be improved to the point where not only you, Mr. Tochio, but other people are obliged to do what you're claiming your, your particular client does. And I don't know anything about your client. I don't know their qualifications. I don't know what kind of work they do. Never seen it. Doesn't matter. I'm talking about the zoning for the entire town. So as good as your client may be, there may be other clients out there that aren't so good. And as an attorney, I'm sure you know that if they can find the loophole, they'll take it. All I'm trying to do is close up a few.
No, I, I hear you. And with respect to the, like, billboard, I believe that if you look at the language on the master plan with everything being submitted, and this grants broad discretion to the planning board in issuing permits, what I'm suggesting is, it doesn't have to do specifically with my client, but if something is proposed which is out of scale, out of character, and the board feels that it doesn't meet the criteria of this, that's something that could be conditioned, it could be rejected, et cetera. And that's, and that's what I'm saying. I think that this gives them the tools to do that. And I, again, it's, these are master plan language we use in other towns, et cetera. And we've had situations where, you know, signage has been reduced. And I understand what you're saying. Nobody wants something which is out of character, et cetera. But it's that fine line between visibility, you know, because visibility helps people, you know, it cuts down on folks getting lost, et cetera. And, you know, things that are too oversized, we would make that, anyone would make that filing as part of the master plan. So that's-
Mr. Tochio, I, I think, I think we've beat this and this, I think it's time to move on to our next contributor.
I was about to cut in, but I didn't think my mic was working.
She wants to say something, George?
I think we understand Charlie's point as well as Jeffrey's point, but one question that I had regarding the recommendation from ZBA, I, I compare it similarly to what happens in 40Bs. And what happens with site plans that take place in front of ZBA, we get to make a recommendation. And we don't, I, I agree, we don't get all the information and a lot of time of decisions made before we even ask for a recommendation. So we need to clean that up on our end as well as maybe some language here that we make it a joint session.
Yeah, and I, we, we envision that, however you want to do it, we, we thought that it was, we tried to make it a plus. And if that doesn't work out with this language, obviously, that needs to be, you know, definitely needs to be fixed. But that's how we saw it.
The, we did joint meetings for William Crossing. We had a top-notch developer in that case, and it worked out well. And even next door at the Walmart Apostle where things were a little more tenuous, I think the joint meetings did work out well.
Nancy, you wanted to ask a question or make a comment?
Kathy, Kathy Pepalardo here.
I'm sorry, Kathy.
There's two of us, but we each have our own thing to talk about. The first question I had, which is a simple one, I don't understand why wastewater treatment facilities would even be listed as a possible permitted use. That makes no sense to me at all. That should be out of there. In regards to water, is this site going to tap into municipal wells? Or are they going to draw their own? And what are you going to do about the septic? And sewage? I know you're talking about having this dry pipe, I believe you called. And is that going to take care of the 967 acres versus what Mr. Swenson was talking about in the beginning was the development of the 300? I'm a little confused here. The focus on the 300 acres versus this 967 that's in this whole rezoning article.
Okay, great. And, and if I may, I'll, I'll answer those. I just took some notes. So on the wastewater, the, the, you know, basically the position is, is that we're able to, with these conditions, to be able to do it with the technology, with the wells, with the monitoring, to make sure that it's environmentally safe. And then what we can do there, for example, is we can compare that to the 90-plus or minus single-family houses that could otherwise be built as of right there, which would have 90 septic systems without advanced treatment, et cetera. And, you know, that's, that's a situation where, you know, the town can look and we can demonstrate that, you know, we, we meet the environmental requirements for that. So that's the first thing. The second question on the water, yeah, I don't know what the answer is yet. But we did inquire, and there's, there's more than enough water. There was a new water line which was installed across, next to Glen Charlie Road. You can see all those new fire hydrants that run all the way up. So there's, there's ample water from what we understand from that supply. There are questions with respect to the water tank and some of the infrastructure, but, but those are issues that, you know, we have to listen to and consider. And then the last question was the 967 acres, that's the entirety of the zone. So only the property that I'm talking about, the 300, isn't included. So what happens is the zone encompasses more than just that, that property. And then what we did was, we looked as we restricted it, we brought it down to between Glen Charlie, Route 25, and then the Plymouth Line on the east. So that was, that was the most efficient way to do that. And that's something we, we talked to Ken about, you know, the way the planners do that, et cetera. And that's how we came up with it. And then the last question, the dry pipe is something that we're just, we're putting in. It's not necessarily attributed specifically to this property or not. We know that the town has long-term problems in a lot of the different neighborhoods with respect to old septic systems, cesspools. And there's a lot of nitrogen and potassium pollution which is going over into the Agawam River, et cetera. So we had the opportunity, there were some grant monies that were available. So what we did was, we worked with, with Ken and his department to make a grant application- So what we did was we worked with, with Ken and his department to make a grant application and do the engineering. So whether this is approved or not, hopefully that's something that's part of Wareham's future. And that has the opportunity to, to really remove a lot of nitrogen from all of the neighborhoods that are to the north of Glen Charlie Road. So that, that's not something that we have to rely on, et cetera. That's just something that, that we had the opportunity to intervene, to try to do something environmentally good for this corner of town. So whether this works or not, hopefully that, you know, that's something that will be a lasting improvement to Wareham. And I think those were the three questions that you asked.
But in, in regards, when you talked about the monitoring wells, that's for the whole 967 acres?
No, that would be, so that would be specific. I can answer the monitoring wells. That's the question. If early on, the question was asked, is that something that, that this is required of every property owner? Who wants to develop under this? Or, or just, you know, the larger format ones that we're talking about? So that I think was a little bit of an open issue. The question was, you know, is it, is it that the wells are, you know, have to be protected from everyone at all costs and therefore there's a high value in requiring it? Or is there any trade-off for something that's a smaller development that could be protected another way? So that, I think that remains an open question, but that's how, that's how everybody spoke about it. Not to talk too much about my folks, but my folks, they, they, they know that they know that monitoring wells are going to be part of what they're going to do. And they'll be both downstream and also upstream. So we had, we had a pretty good conversation about that about an hour ago.
But if, if there's a problem, who's responsible for it?
Well, if, if the monitoring wells show that it's a problem from, for example, my client, they would be responsible for it. So that's why you've got upstream, downstream, et cetera. And it's, yeah, and that's the answer. So you know, the line in the sand that I heard was, you know, we're not making a whole lot more groundwater. We have to protect this. So that's, you know, that's agreed, 100% agreed. You know, that's, that's something that we deal with quite often. So that's, you know, that's, that's part of the package that's going to be put together. I'll also notice for you, I think that we changed, we, you know, we, we increased the open space early on. You probably caught that. So, and I remember you two from your earlier question. So you asked us to look at that and I went through and then, you know, we, we saw that, you know, just based on the land size, et cetera, we could get up to 25%. So I thought, I thought that was responsive to, to your comments, so.
I have one last question, I promise.
Sure, no problem.
Traffic on Glen Charlie Road.
Yes.
Versus your development, you keep talking about Route 25. You don't have access to Route 25. What are you going to do for that?
So on Glen Charlie Road, if, so Glen Charlie Road only can cover or handle so much traffic. That's, that's something which is ascertainable. And that, that puts in a cap. So if something starts to go in and it's, it's only achievable from Glen Charlie, that's going to be, that's going to be a damper on what can happen. Because we can go through, we can do the math on the uses and we can say, unless you get another way in, this, this is the maximum of what you can do. So what that's going to do is that's going to put a lot of pressure on the owner of the land to say, I need to solve more problems. So that's, that's why the Route 25 access is such a plus. Because there's more than a mile from, you know, the other exits preceding or following it. So it meets all of these criteria for the Federal Highway Administration to have, have an exit put there. So what happens is that's something that needs to be designed. But the other thing is, is that Glen Charlie, that's only a halfway into, you know, there are, there are a lot of problems with respect to the interchange that's there, Maple Springs, et cetera. This, this allows us to design something that we could land it right there. And it would actually, you know, have transportation improvements. It would be, we anticipate federal and Commonwealth Massachusetts dollars. And that's, that's the plan. If we can't make that happen, then there's going to be a self-limitation until they're able to solve that problem.
Thank you.
Hey Nancy, Nancy, this is Richard. I just wanted to share with you, I did make those earlier comments about asking the question about should the monitoring wells be mandatory or they should be optional in this? And it was, Mr. Tocchio pointed out that everything that goes in here is 100 acres. Minimum, a minimum size. And that kind, I, I had lost sight of that and my thinking right now is, is that the monitoring well should be mandatory for any project of 100 acres or bigger going into this, this area. So that'll be my position going forward.
I, I appreciate that. The Kathy and I both, as having been laboratory people, understand that you also need to monitor for more than just nitrogen. Your, our well, our wells are way too important not to. I mean, all you need to do is look at Flint, Michigan and the lead issues that they've got. So we need to be monitoring for a lot more than just nitrogen. I do have some more questions, but I, in the interest of letting some other people who may not have been at other meetings first to say something, I will hold off on asking my questions until a little bit later. Okay, thank you.
Just, just for general information, the Wareham Water Department already has monitoring wells around most of their wells. I don't know how onset is in that particular case. I think, without seeing the groundwater flow, I think we're probably closer to onset as far as flow goes, but.
George, that
They do monitor more than nitrogen and phosphorus.
That brings up a question. Has the Prudential Committee taken a look at this zoning bylaw and do they have an opinion on it?
I spoke with Water Department and they are comfortable with, with the protection that's in our current zoning. And as I've said before, that anything that wishes to lessen that protection needs to prove to us why it's worthy.
Okay. And do you know if onset has also looked at this zoning?
I don't know that.
Thank you.
The, to say that, that any project that comes here has to meet the spirit of the protection granted this property. If they need an onsite wastewater plant, they need to show us that it works. I don't know if there's anyone waiting. I can't. Is that Mike King?
This is Jim Manish. I have some questions. I was being polite and letting other people go. So I've been listening and what would be the percent coverage for mixed-use development as compared to R130 on the 300 acres? Do we have any idea on that?
Yeah, yeah. So we, Richard, Richard put together a pretty good synopsis. So there's a limitation that wound up, so basically it's, it's like up to 10% of the total land area. And then, you know, basically it's an equivalent kind of underlying, underlying zoning there. So what can wind up happening is, it's, you know, we ran through some of the, the numbers before. I think it wound up being like, Richard, was it up to 10 structures?
I was talking initially, I'll just run through it real quick, about the 268 acres, I believe, that's in the notice property.
It wasn't my question what you're answering.
I'm trying to get there. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I thought you wanted to know about residential ratios by acres.
What was, what would the difference be between a 130 buildout into mixed-use development, recreational entertainment on impervious area?
Oh, impervious area. Oh, oh, I don't, I don't know. We haven't
That's good. That's good.
Yeah, yeah. That would be, that would be studied as part, that's what you do when you, you go forward and you do the groundwater or the, basically the stormwater analysis.
Okay. And so we don't know that. Now, for the, the housing, apartment condo-style housing, would there be any inclusionary or affordable or an offset for that?
There's no requirement here in the zoning that's proposed.
Okay, well, good. So what about the, the traffic impact that you were discussing earlier? Or compared for 130 buildout and a entertainment, recreational buildout? Do we have any numbers on those?
No, just, we're just doing the bylaw, zoning bylaw tonight. So there'd have to be proposal that comes through. So that would, that would perhaps be a good question after there was zoning in place and a proposal before the board.
Jim, there is a proposal that allows a little different look at packing and, and how that's doled out in packing and that type of thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking for like kind of broad numbers ballpark on, on, you know, as a comparative aspect. That's all. I think, I think these, these things are important for us as voters when we're looking at, you know, how, how does the proposed changes for an overlay and 130 as of right, what's the impact going to be in total? So, you know, and I'm not saying good or bad. I'm just asking for information. Monitoring wells, you hit on that. And I would think you'd do some beforehand to see what was there anyhow, but that's, that's up to you if, if this thing passed. The nitrogen, you, you have to meet certain standards for nitrogen removal. I know. And also I don't think we got the, the grant approved this round on the request, right, for the, so we'll have
Funny, what's funny about that is they approved two-thirds of the requests. So they haven't decided whether that remains open or whether they're going to roll it over into the new year. But that money is not part of the two-thirds of the award.
Yeah, that would be nice.
That, that is for the proposed dry pipe? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, exactly. So the Baker Administration, they, it's like they conservatively held back like a third of the monies. You know, with the whole, you know, fiscal problems, it's kind of being held for the rainy day fund and then they're going to decide going forward.
Well, I think we have far more local issues than, than that. Good time to look that out.
I agree.
Okay, now we're talking about estimated tax revenues. I know it's better than underlying R130, but what would happen if we had 100-acre solar voltaic field out there where the old Piggery was and the gravel bit? What would that impact be on the town and as compared to, you know, the recreation, entertainment slash R130 return in revenue? Your job creation wouldn't be there, but I think those are things to think about.
Yeah, the, the problems with that is, and I don't know what your experience has been in town. We're starting, we're starting to see a little bit of swingback from some municipalities that have, that have committed to that. And that's exactly, you hit the nail on the head. I mean, it's, you know, a revenue stream on some level. But what it does is it takes the land out of active participation for permanent jobs. Also, you don't necessarily get, you know, recurring things like meals taxes, things of that nature. So we haven't done that analysis and I, we really wouldn't because that's not something that this group does.
Right, you wouldn't. The town should do that. You know, if, if anybody would be interested in doing that, I know that the, the owner of the property would, would receive a rental on it and the town usually works something out. So we get, was it taxes and lieu or pilot program? I don't know. Ken would know that. He takes care of all that for us. That's just, you know, these are just things I look at.
Yep.
Route 25 interchange would be great. I'm, I'm still worried about the traffic impact on Glen Charlie Road. That's why I asked the difference in the impact of an underlying R130 compared to business, you know, entertainment and recreational overlay. And you guys, I mean, you guys, I shouldn't say that. The, the people that you're representing have an idea what they want to do there. So, you know, we should kind of like just, just say, well, this is what it would be. Be great for more jobs. Hopefully they're decent paying and not low-paying, you know, service industry and whatnot. So I, I have made my mind up. I like to see some, I don't like to just jump into things. This is a long-term impact on the town and I, I just, I think it was brought to my attention in August.
Yeah, it, it
You're driving it, so it worries me, but thank you.
No, it is, Jim, and that's a good point. I, I can point to, you know, in Quincy, for example, it's, you know, it's regarded as an excellent employer. Wages, you know, payroll taxes. We've had situations where we've actually gone through and years gone by just to see what an economic engine that was. And the employment was a big pick, you know, a big part of that picture. So the plan is, is that, you know, this is going to, this is going to be something that that model has continued here. So we'd invite you if, if, you know, from executive branch to executive branch. I know that Mayor Koch in Quincy, you know, he's, he fields different questions. But, you know, you may want to give him a call and, and see what his experience has been. You know, I, I know, you know, he's, he's spoken about this directly. So that might, that might also be an opportunity.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not questioning the company, their ethics or the job that they'll do. I'm questioning the impact the proposed changes to our zoning would have on the town.
Yeah, I was talking about the wages. I'm sorry. That, that's
General, but wages, yeah, you know, we have a lot of lower-paying jobs going in and a lot of times they're associated with, you know, service industry jobs and whatnot. So I don't know if we need a lot more of that, but, but thank you very much.
You're welcome, Jim. Thank you.
Don't see, don't see anybody else waiting. That's, wouldn't be the first time that happens.
Could I just give an answer maybe to Jim's question about the relationship of the underlying zoning to the development of 100 acres?
Yeah.
Jim Manish, Charlie here. If you took 100 acres and put the underlying zoning of three acres per house lot in that 100 acres, you'd end up with roughly 33 lots. 33 lots equates to 33 times three acres per lot.
Yep.
And if you assume that between a house and a paved driveway, there's probably 5,000 square feet of impervious area on that three acres, you'd end up with roughly 3% of that 33 acres being impervious cover.
Right. And then, then you do your roads, you know, your, your infrastructure for coming in.
Yeah, I did that. But to compare, to compare that number to what it might be if you developed this project at the rate of 75% of the area being developable, the majority of that 75% is going to be impervious cover between buildings and pavement and sidewalks. It says in the proposed bylaw that 25% of it has to be held as open space. Presumably that open space is just natural cover, not including little grass, grass plots that somebody might calculate into the 25%. But let's say 25 acres out of 100 has to be left as open space. You could figure the majority of that 75 acres is probably going to be impervious cover of one side or another. So the percentage of that for 75 acres is going to be significantly higher than what it would be if you just did it for the underlying zoning of three acres per house lot.
Charlie, I, I'm not sure how, how you can make all those assumptions without looking at a project plan.
All I'm doing is saying that I'm applying the underlying basis for what they're saying here. It says that a, a minimum of 25% has to be open space. That means the rest of the area could be impervious cover of one turn, one side or another. Could be a house, it could be a motel, it could be a high rise, it could be parking, it could be the driveways going in, it could be anything, anything but open space. So the majority of that is potentially developable as open space. But if you were to compare that to the percentage of what a single family house lot of three acres is, that percentage is so much higher than what the three acres for a single family house lot would be. So the impact of impervious cover is significant. Not to say that it's not controllable, I'm not suggesting that.
Right, it's, so, right, so.
And all I'm trying to do is answer Jim's question, what's the comparison from one to the other?
Well, my, thank you, Charlie, and I, I know it was quite higher, quite a bit higher, and I know there's methods to recapture the, the runoff and, and, you know, with, with the rain gardens and whatnot, and.
Yeah, exactly, all infiltration, all the stormwater management.
And all that, I just asked a question, you know, and you concentrate where the water's going and how it filters in, but that's, that's, that's another story for another day, thank you.
Yeah, and it, I mean, if you go through that 100 acres, if it's four bedroom houses, I mean, you get 14,500 gallons per day of, you know, septic effluent that's going conventional systems is, that, you know, you, you can make certain assumptions and cut it different ways. You bring that up to 300, you know, now you're 14,5, you know, times three, you're at 43,560 gallons of, of effluent, and that's also funny because 43,560 is how many square feet in acres, so that's strange when I saw that number.
That's right. But, but, but thank you, it's, we, I mean, a lot of assumption can be made, you know, if you do this or do that, solar voltaic, some housing, maybe, maybe conservation land by some, but, you know, right now, this is what you have on the table.
All right, I see any hands raised at the time or anything like that. Any, you know, other information? Is the board seeking anything further, or? Any questions after that?
I have none at this time, George. I'm thinking that our board needs to schedule some time to get together and compare our notes.
I would say that's reasonable, especially we want to bring Russ up to speed and let him have his, his comments.
Can I make a motion that would close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is that Mike that made the move, second?
Yep.
Michael?
It was, Mike King made the second. Is there any discussion on that point?
I think you're making a big mistake closing a public hearing, George. And we had a discussion before.
Well, should it be, should it be continued, Michael?
Well, the thing is, we're going down a rattle, you know, you're putting a gun to everybody's head to make a decision. I'm not ready to make a decision now, and I think there's a lot of more information to be put out there. How are you going to represent this to the public? The public's going to have a lot of questions, I'm sure. You know, it causes a lot of problems, we've once we have before on projects of question.
So what would the criteria be? I mean, we've had two public hearings, I've gotten tons of feedback from people during these hearings and, and privately. I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to continuing it, I just want to make sure that we have a plan to, to close it and move on. You know, this is, what's our current schedule right now for, for town meeting, April?
It's March 13 now.
That's, that's right, that's right. So we've got five weeks, at some point we need to close. If we're going to continue it, I'd like to know what steps we're going to take to satisfy whatever requirements that you have, or this board has to close it, so we can move on. I'm not opposed to continuing it, I just don't know what more there is to do. The public hearing is designed to provide the public an opportunity to share their thoughts and get questions answered, and we've done that, we've done it, and they've been long hearings, and we get a lot of, a lot of vocal people.
If you said what, March 13th is obviously.
Yes, George, 13.
So I would we're acting on a continued town meeting where the warrant is fixed. Is my understanding.
Oh, no, so currently we have, there's a special town meeting, which the moderator has, she's got broad discretion to roll it and push it by 30-day increments, so she currently has it pushed to March 13th. And then she's got the discretion to push that again, it's, it's 100% within her authority and her power. So March 13 is the current date, and then what she does is she monitors it, she consults with police, fire, board of health, et cetera, when she makes.
I understand the extension process, but I believe we're working with the same posted warrant. Now, that timeframe may be shorter for a special town meeting.
Got it.
The impression that, that I get, I perceive, George, in this whole conversation, is we're putting the copy before, before the horse. You know, it's project specific, and yet we're making a drastic change, you know, that makes me very uneasy, very uneasy. Which, we're going to change all our rules in the book to make this thing saleable, I don't think that's the way to go.
Might I suggest a negative vote on the closing of the public hearing?
That's what it looks like it's going to go. I'm only one vote, but like I said, the town people make the final decision. Like I said, it really rings the hair in the back of my neck.
Well, my point being that upon confirmation that the warrant is closed will depend on what we recommend to town meeting. Don't recommend. So we can sort that out, so if you would withdraw the motion in second and give me a further study, I think that would be more appropriate.
Paulson, Richard's court, right? It was Richard's motion.
But I, I do want to, and I'll be happy to do that, George, but I, I do want someone to explain to me what the, what our criteria is for closing. We've got to do it at some point, and right now, personally, I think that we have executed and done our due diligence on a public hearing on this article. I don't know what more there is to do. So if we want to keep, keep it open for further study, that's just, to me, it's just very open-ended. I don't know that if we have our next meeting and open the public hearing again, and, and, and listen to a lot of the same comments over and over again, that we're accomplishing anything.
If we close a public hearing, we have to, if we want to ask a question of Jeffrey, we couldn't talk to him.
Are you sure that's true?
Am I right, George? That's right.
Yeah, so, there's no, so, so nothing more would, would come in while you guys then decide to deliberate, so I guess in Michael's, if you've got questions, if I haven't answered something, you know, I'm, I'm available and, and ready to go. I guess the question is likelihood that you'll have additional questions versus is this something that we can wrap up next Monday or, or something like that? Is there a, is there a timeframe that you all would envision working out?
Well, I think we need to go, I think if we leave it as it is, the corrected or adjusted document that you provided is not what's going to be on the warrant, because that's not what was advertised.
If, oh, I, I, so, so George, if, if, if we get to a, if we get to a point where we've got a vote on a recommendation, and there's also the option that we basically re-advertise that, knowing that you folks have already vetted it, and then, you know, we basically go forward from there. That is an option as well, just because this has taken a while, and I know there have been questions whether we should do that. We can address.
Recent years, town meeting has become a little more fluid than it used to be. That's a kind way to put it. So I would be interested to see how we're going to handle this, because the changes are different, and I think for the sake of possibly having a full board next week to discuss this in open session with you available to answer questions, I think would be the most productive thing at this point.
And I get that, and, and I will also follow up, because I have to, I have to also follow up with town council and Mrs. Moderator about these issues as well, so it's, you know, these are things that we're prepared to address, if, if that makes sense for you folks to go through. Also, I could go through and put together a conforming, conforming edits with, with Ken Buckland as well, so that may work out, so that everyone could see it, you know, a conforming draft.
And I know it doesn't sound so, but I think keeping the hearing open would be more productive.
I still haven't had, got an answer though to what the criteria is that this board is going to use to make the decision to close the hearing. I would expect that we're getting very close to a drop dead date by next Monday. We can have the final document with the edits that Mr. Toshia was proposed. I'm, I'm anxious to see the, the monitoring well language. And we can review that final document next Monday with him, open the public hearing again. And then, when, when we're done, are we going to continue it again, Michael Baptiste, or are we going to close it then?
We have to, we will. You know, that's, that's not, that's not the end of the line.
Right, right now, I foresee the board having a discussion and making a recommendation to town meeting.
But we're going to have an open public hearing next, next Monday as well.
And the positive side of that is if a board member has a question,
Right.
they can't get an answer to it if we close the public hearing.
I've been around here a long time, and we've had several times closing a public hearing early. If you think.
I need to, Michael Baptiste, I need you to educate me, because I'm, I'm unaware of, of the limitations that get put upon me asking questions once the public hearing is closed, so. I trust you, I know you're right, you, you.
You can ask questions amongst the board, but you cannot talk to anybody else about it, it's basically a closed hearing. And the thing is, your hands are tied.
Right, so additional, additional information doesn't come in, so what it does is it, it closes it from, you know, plans and things of that nature, and then what happens is the board all confers amongst themselves. But, but that, you know, I've been in situations where everyone has a question, but they did just close, and they can't ask, so. Right, Michael's, Michael's right, we just ask that if there are questions, even if, if things can be expressed through Ken, he answers questions for me all the time. Whatever we can do to, to, to get this teed up, that would be, that'd be appreciated.
All right, all right, so I will, George, can I, from a process point of view, withdraw my motion now?
It's fine with me, we do have a question from Deborah, she is a hand raised.
Hi, hi, I'm Deborah. I just wanted to second that on what Mike's saying, because I know that there are still people, you know, questions are going to come up, and I feel like this is such a huge project for a town that, in my opinion, isn't really ready for it, so if we are going to do this, then we need to be ready. And there's just so much, so much that needs to be discussed, and questions that people have to ask. I don't have any at this moment, but e- even if I don't, I, I can at least hear the other questions from other people. I just don't think it's something that, you know, it really needs a lot of time as far as, you know, in my opinion, for people, and if you can do another meeting, town meeting, to discuss it more, I personally think it's a great idea. I have such anxiety about it, just talking about it, because I'm overwhelmed with it.
And a lot of those questions will be asked during the town meeting itself. You know, I think a lot of what we've covered so far has, has had a specific theme to it, and I.
The education of the people, George, before town meeting is very important, you know, people feel very intimidated.
If I may, you know, even if, just to humor us, you know, just to appease us, I think that would be a great idea. I mean, I don't think that's asking too much for a project that's going to be as big as it's going to be for, you know, a long period of time, it's going to, I mean, we're not talking about a couple of acres.
Point's well taken. So, can I make a motion then, my previous one is withdrawn, and can I make a motion then to continue the public hearing?
I'll second that.
To to February 8th?
We're going to have a busy night, February 8th. It was a motion made and seconded to continue the public hearing to February 8th.
And could you do that as the first topic? So we don't wait till the end of the night? No, I'm just kidding.
Usually ask that question.
Well, let me do it for you.
Yeah, please, we've, we've got hearings, we've got hearings in other towns later that night, too, it's, this is crazy. Thank you.
Well, you know, thank you, we're going from two different sides here, so it's hard.
If, I will say that if it's up first, it'll probably be an abbreviated hearing, because we have others on the agenda that night. So if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote on continuing to February 8th.
I just want to say thank you, everyone, and thank you for allowing that to be the meeting, the next meeting.
You're welcome, and thank you for helping out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any board members opposed? Hearing non-unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Would you care to make another motion?
Um, let me think, oh, do you want to adjourn the meeting, George?
Unless you guys want to watch the.
Richard makes a motion to adjourn the, the meeting.
I was just standing, it wound up, why should we leave so early? I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, great week, everyone.